Good morning. We're going to go ahead and get started here in a few minutes. If you are here to speak on a topic today, a member of the general public, please make sure that you do fill out a white card.
That's painful.
Along with your, along with your name, and if you are in favor or opposition there of the item, and make sure it gets submitted to a member of staff, please. We'll get started in a few moments. Ms. Wendy, are we, Ms. Wendy, are we ready?
We're still having a few issues. ISS is here, but if we want to get started, we can go through roll call and your notice if you want.
Sam is in the restroom. Real quick, he'll be back. So if we want to wait for him, that's fine.
We can wait, that's fine.
Okay. Ms. Wendy, is staff ready?
Yep.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. We're going to go ahead and get the meeting underway now, please. Please keep all noise down to a minimum so we can go ahead and conduct business. Good morning, staff. Can we go ahead and get a roll call, please? Here.
Mr. Kelly?
Here.
Mr. Caliendo?
Here.
Mr. Scarborough?
Here.
Mr. Burke?
Here.
Mr. Robinson?
Mr. Beatty?
Here.
Mr. Sowards?
Okay. With Commissioner Pavlik joining us via WebEx, do we have a motion to allow participation or discussion thereof?
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Beatty, seconded by Commissioner Kelly. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. So that is a nay?
The vote is?
The vote is five to two in, not in favor of participation via WebEx?
Okay.
Is there a reason?
Four to two.
Do we have a reason why she's on WebEx?
Work-related purposes was the reason, I believe. Yes?
Commissioner Pavlik, can you explain your extraordinary circumstance?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Yes, I had to go out of town for a work-related conference, and I can't, I couldn't get back in time, so.
So by definition, that's not an extraordinary circumstance, and the vote was five to two?
Four to two?
Four.
Four to two, I'm sorry. Four to two in opposition of participation via WebEx?
Okay. Okay, so Commissioner Pavlik, we will see you next month.
Okay, perfect. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. Will everyone please rise for the opening prayer and the pledge led by Commissioner Burke?
Lord, we ask your guidance today as we consider matters that will affect the safety and welfare of many people in our county. Help us to listen with open minds to matters that are important before us and to act on the matters that will benefit those who reside in our area. Keep our minds open and alert, our hearts compassionate, and our comments charitable. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The zoning commission of Palm Beach County has convened at 9:00 AM in the Vista Center Ken Rogers Hearing Room, VC 1W47, 2300 North Jog Road, West Palm Beach, 33411, to consider applications for official zoning map amendments, planned developments, conditional uses, development order amendments, type-two variances, and other actions permitted by the Palm Beach County Unified Land Development Code, and to hear the recommendations of staff on these matters. The commission takes final action regarding Class B conditional uses, subdivision variances, and type-two variances, and issues advisory recommendations on accepting, rejecting, or modifying the recommendations of staff regarding other requests. The Board of County Commissioners of Palm Beach County will conduct a public hearing in the sixth floor Jane Thompson Memorial Chambers, 301 North Olive Avenue, West Palm Beach, 33401, at 9:30 AM on Thursday, March 24, 2022, to take final action on the applications listed below regarding official zoning map amendments, rezoning, Class A conditional uses, requested uses, planned developments, development order amendments, waiver requests, and administrative inquiries. Zoning hearings are quasi-judicial in nature and must be conducted to afford all parties due process. The Board of County Commissioners have adopted procedures for conduct of quasi-judicial hearings to govern the conduct of such proceedings. The procedures include the following requirements. Any communications with commissioners which occur outside the public hearing must be fully disclosed at the hearing. Applicants and persons attending the hearing may question commissioners regarding their disclosures. Such questions shall be limited solely to the disclosures made at the hearing or the written communications made a part of their record at the hearing. Any person representing a group or organization must provide documentation that the person representing the group has the actual authority to do so regarding the matter before the commission. Any person who wishes to speak at the hearing will be sworn in and may be subject to cross-examination. The applicant and county staff may cross-examine witnesses. Any other persons attending the hearing may submit cross-examination questions, including follow-up questions, to the chair who will conduct the examination. The scope of the cross-examination is limited to the facts alleged by the witness in relation to the application. Public comment is encouraged, and all relevant information should be presented to the commission in order that a fair and appropriate decision can be made. Do we have proof of publication?
Motion to receive and file.
Motion made by Commissioner Caliendo to receive and file publication, seconded by Commissioner Scarborough. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion passes. Do we have an adoption of the minutes?
Motion, motion to adopt the minutes.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Caliendo to adopt the minutes, seconded by Commissioner Scarborough. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Swearing in by the county attorney, Mr. Scott, please.
All those wishing to testify or speak on today's items, please rise and raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you.
We have some amendments, amendments to the agenda, Ms. Wendy.
Yes, we do. On our amendments to the agenda, we have number five, which is ZV 2020-2120, Delray Self-Service Storage. They have a request to postpone. So when I get to that portion of the agenda, we'll do a motion on withdrawals, a portion of applications, ZV 2021-1737, which is Young Israel at Boca. They request to withdraw variance number three, so we will have a motion on that. And then because of the withdrawal of that variance, we've requested to move the remainder of that application to the consent agenda, which is ZV 2021-1737. Ends our amendments to the agenda.
Okay. So do we have a motion to adopt the agenda as amended?
A motion to amend, accept the agenda as amended.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Caliendo to adopt the agenda as amended, seconded by Commissioner Burke. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Agenda passes. Disclosure, starting to my left. Commissioner Kelly? Commissioner Beatty?
No.
None. Agenda item number six, I spoke with the agent.
Oh, let me back up. I did speak with the agent on number six, but I am going to recuse myself on that item.
Understandable, Commissioner Beatty. Commissioner Caliendo, any?
None.
And I have no disclosures at this time. Moving on to item K, conflicts and recusals, starting to my left again with Commissioner Kelly. Commissioner Beatty?
Yes, I recuse myself on item number three, C 2021-01910. I'm accusing myself because I have open contracts with Palm Beach County, and that application is based on some Palm Beach County airports work. And I'm recusing myself on item number six. My firm has contracts with Jay Morton Planning for Landscape Architecture Services.
Okay. Commissioner Burke?
None.
Commissioner Scarborough?
None.
Mr. Caliendo?
None.
And I have no recusals. So we have a consent agenda that is going to have to be voted in two parts, minus items three and six, but prior to doing so, do we need to make a motion for item number six, or do we just move on to postponements right now?
We'll move on to postponement.
Okay.
So the first item on our agenda, page two, item number one is ZV ABN CA 2021-797. The request before the board is for Palm Elite, and it is an amendment to postpone to April 7. There is no motion required, as they requested prior to the hearing.
Okay.
On our add delete, item number five, ZV 2020-02120, which is Delray Self-Service Storage. The applicant submitted a request that's part of the amendment to the agenda to postpone to May 5. So they will need to come to the podium, state their extraordinary circumstance, so we can do a motion.
Okay, do we have the agent here for item number five? Mr. Backman?
Is this one?
Yep.
Scott Backman. We've been working very closely with the neighbors on this. I think this is probably our third postponement from you guys, I believe. There have been, what we're hearing before you today is a variance that is not necessarily plan-related, but obviously we have a pending plan as well. And so we're working very closely with the neighbors on the plan and the uses, and so we've asked for an additional 60 days to continue working through that.
Any question by the commission?
None.
Any, in my opinion, any time needed to work with the community is good for you guys, and that's, that's great for the community. Do we have a motion for a postponement to April 5, or May 5, I'm sorry?
Move postpone item five to April 5.
May 5.
May 5.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Beatty, seconded by Commissioner Burke to postpone item number five. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
Motion passes. Thank you, Scott.
Under withdrawals, also on your add delete, the applicant for 2021-1737, which is Young Israel at Boca Raton, requested to withdraw variance number three, which is the elimination of foundation plannings. They can, their justification is that they are able to do that administratively to relocate. So staff is in support, but we will need a motion to withdraw, and our suggestion is without prejudice.
Okay. Do we have a motion to withdraw variance, request V3 to eliminate foundation planning without prejudice?
So moved. Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Scarborough, seconded by Commissioner Burke. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Recused.
I'm sorry, one recusal. Motion passes five with one recusal.
That'll bring us to the consent agenda. And this is where your request is basically to take a motion for item number two first. Staff is, this is Cherry Road, MEPD, ABN DOA 2021-1030. The request before the board is a development order amendment, as well as a development order abandonment. Staff is recommending approval of the request, subject to conditions in Exhibit C.
Do we have a motion for item number two?
Move to recommend approval of a development and ornament, order amendment to modify the site plan and uses, add square footage, and modifying the lead conditions of approval, subject to the conditions of approvals indicated in Exhibit C.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Scarborough to recommend approval, seconded by Commissioner Caliendo. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes six-zero.
Okay. So moving on, on our consent agenda, we can actually do a motion for item number three and number six with Commissioner Beatty's recusal. So if you would like to take a motion on those two items.
And number six would be as amended, yes?
Yes, as amended on the add delete, correct.
Move to approve agenda item number three and agenda item number six as amended.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Scarborough, seconded by Commissioner Caliendo to approve the remaining consent items as amended. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes six-zero.
Five, I've recused on it.
Five, zero, one recusal. I do that every time for you. I apologize.
Okay, we are moving right along. That will bring us to page five of our agenda, item number four, which is ZV SWCA 2020-880 for TRG Farms. The item is on our regular item number four. It has 42 pages, conditions on page 10 through 13. The site is 5.1 acres. The request before the board includes a type-two variance, as well as a subdivision waiver, and a Class A conditional use for landscape service. Staff is recommending denial of all three requests, so I will turn it over to the applicant so they can make their presentation. And then staff.
Give me one second. So ladies and gentlemen, obviously, this is going to be an emotional part of our meeting today. Please keep all of your comments to a minimum. Please keep the cheers and applause and any comments to yourselves, and afford everyone the right and opportunity to speak today. Thank you so much for that. You have the floor, sir.
Good morning. My name is Jim Froggen. I'm the agent for TRG Farms. I have to say, when I read the staff report, it made my knees weak, made me shake. I was extremely upset after all the work we put in. We started this project almost three years ago, but 30 years ago, I went to work for John McGillis in the zoning division. I was there for 10 years. I learned a little bit about zoning regulations. I've been on my own for 20 years. And so three years ago, Jan Redlich, the owner of TRG Farms, called me and said, we have a code violation. I have a landscape business. What can we do? So I looked at it. I took him on as a client, and I started the process to go through the zoning approvals to get what we needed so they could keep their business at their location. We would all love to work from home. The COVID-19 has changed the American landscape in that way. Mr. Redlich is a one-man business. They send four trucks out every day with their crews. He's got one desk. He's got a small building. He has, let's take a look at that. That's a building that was approved in 1980, I'm sorry. It was constructed in 1980 as a garage for the resident that lived on the five-acre property at the time. Consequently, in the process of going through the zoning approval, I was told I needed an agricultural building permit. So I went ahead and applied. We got the agricultural building permit for the farm building because that's where the office and the maintenance was for the equipment. That's the road frontage for TRG Farms. So we had the property appraiser come in, and we spent months and months speaking with them about the agricultural exemption that they give to bona fide agricultural uses. The green area is the grow area. It's covered with plants. We thought that that would exempt us from zoning regulations, and Palm Beach County did not agree with that, so there was some back and forth for approximately six or eight months. At that point, they took, they decided that they would revoke the farm building permit, and they deemed the building commercial. The building itself, the building itself is a small building. It's approximately 1,800 square feet. The TRG operations are mostly off-site. They can, they're a typical landscape company. They take their crew, their material, their trucks, and the plant material. They go off-site. They service large PUDs in the Western community. They keep approximately 15 to 20 men employed. The foreman makes, they have three foremen. They make up the $60,000 a year. The lowest-paid employee is $18 an hour. In 19, in 2019, Palm Beach County started code revision for the landscape service industry. They finally got through the whole process. They deemed the landscape service as a commercial use. So suddenly, landscape companies where they had a previous agricultural use, suddenly they were commercial use, and they were subject to all different types of regulations. This is an aerial. I'm not sure. Can you hit that? That's aerial of the nursery itself. So when the landscape service code was changed, it was approved, and the AGR PUD with site plan approval only. We happened to be in the agricultural residential district, the urban suburban tier, so we were subject to a more stringent process for Class A use. That put us in a position where we had to meet commercial code regulations. One of the major code regulation that affected us was the road access. The right-of-way for a commercial is 80 feet. You must have a road 80 feet wide. Anderson Lane, where TRG is located, has a 60-foot right-of-way. At the location criteria in the new code, they offered a provision for a waiver if you were less than 80 feet. The majority of the landscape companies in the Western community are all on 50, 60-foot right-aways. Therefore, every landscape company needs approval of the waiver provision in order to continue. That's the need for the waiver is critical, and it would be catastrophe to be denied the waiver. When the BCC approved the new UNLTC regulations, there were a number of large companies and heritage farms that came through for their approval. They needed site plan approval only because they were in the AGR PUD, which allowed commercial landscape companies. However, I was at those heritage farms hearings. I saw the number of crowds. I understood why they were denied because they didn't furnish the land development section with the required analysis that they needed for the road. On the same token, the number of people that turned out, the number of companies that were out there, hundreds of employees, hundreds of trucks on a daily basis, it was definitely a huge security concern for the pedestrians in the neighborhood. They were denied, and I supported that denial. I'm friends with Bradley Miller, who took those projects through, and it was not a good situation for the neighborhood to let those landscapers continue as they were. However, on Anderson Lane, they have a small company. They're a one-owner company. They send four trucks out every day. They are nothing like heritage farms. Our traffic statement shows that we have, we had less than 20 trips out, 20 trips in, morning, 20 trips in, and out in the afternoon. The main objection land development has to our approval was the stabilization of the road and the 90-degree bend on Anderson Lane. These are our videos. I can't turn them on. There was a situation with the PowerPoint. These are daily horse traffic. Those horse trailers weigh three times as much as a landscape trailer full of palm frauds. There's no question that the pandemic has affected our county and the economic engine. TRG Farms has lost 25% of their employees over five years of employment. Their customers are all PUD management companies. They've also reduced their, their staffs. They've reduced the, their costs by reducing time the TRG spends on the property. So everybody's sort of in jeopardy from that. Then when you take the, the road situation waiver that was approved and the new code revision, in the AR district and the AR AGR PUD, there's very few roads that meet the 80-foot right-of-way requirement for commercial. So I, we're kind of up against the wall there. When we first started this process, and we were dealing with the property appraisers' office, and they did deem us agriculture exempt, it took six months of push and pull with Palm Beach County to get them to recognize we were exempt from zoning regulations for the nursery. They then said that the, the building itself, I've lost that. The building itself, instead of being an agricultural use like it was for the past 45 years, it's now commercial use. So we had to meet, we had to meet foundation planning, commercial setbacks, besides the road waiver, and the side setback, which we applied for the variances for those also. The new code provisions basically put landscape service in commercial and light industrial zoning. That's okay for a small company that sends lawn mowers out every day. For a company like TRG that grows, that has acres of plants and trees that they ship out and plant on their site, it's a different story. They couldn't possibly find a piece of property large enough, an ILO commercial property, to support their nursery operations. They need a larger property. The other landscapers, the smaller companies, they're, they're in the same boat. They grow their foliage on the property, and they need that to provide for their customers. That's the code provision associated with landscape service put in industrial and commercial is definitely cross-purposes with, with what TRG nursery needs. When we started this process, Palm Beach County doubted that we were a bona fide agricultural use, so we had to prove that. Consequently, we applied and received best management practices from the State of Florida Department of Agriculture. They gave us 2.7 acres. We had a nursery certificate from the State of Florida. When we first started, I was speaking with John McGillis and Bill Cross. That first letter on the left talks about how we have to prove that we're a bona on the left talks about how we have to prove that we're a bona fide agricultural use. That was in 2019. After that, Palm Beach County said, okay, you're agricultural exempt for the nursery, but not the landscape business. So we went ahead and we applied for the Class A use and zoning said that we, we had to have DRO approval. So we backed up, we applied for our DRO site plan approval. We went down that road for approximately six or eight months and then we got to, August 2021, six or eight months later, we were told we did not need DRO approval because Palm Beach County did recognize that they, that we were agriculture exempt from zoning regulations with respect to the wholesale nursery. You'll have to excuse me if I'm repeating myself, I'm not comfortable as a public speaker, I'm not polished like a lot of the folks that you see before you. This is a site plan that we presented for our Class A use. We needed four different variances, which we don't need the variances. We found out if we're denied from the variances, we're okay with that. We can move the operation into the house, it's in the center of the lot, and it will meet all those regulations. The only thing that we need is a road waiver. Now, when we get to... I'd like to talk about the length of time. I was just talking about the DRO. Initially, I didn't think we needed DRO. Palm Beach County zoning said you do need it, so we went ahead and we applied. We had 12 different extensions because we kept falling into these pits. Then we, we had over $22,000 in Palm Beach County fees associated with extending our application that was in the process. That's a major commercial stable on Tammas Trail to the north. There's daily horse trailers in and out carrying 10, 12 horses at a time. Palm Beach County's land development major objection is to the, this intersection here, it's an L-shaped 90-degree intersection. This roadway was planned and designed by Palm Beach County right around 2002. The road itself, the road bed thickness for a non-planned collector is the same as a commercial, other than the rock material for the 12 inches pavement stabilization. The pavement itself on Anderson is three inches thick versus one and a half inches thick required for a non-planned collector. Scott, I hope I have those figures correct. So we are just a hair under what the land development section likes for the road size. With regards to the, the intersection itself, they designed a 90-degree turn. There's nine 90-degree turns in this neighborhood. There's appropriate signage. It's very slow. Traffic is very slow there. This is the neighborhood. I would like to say that those yellow dots reflect letters of opposition that came in. I'll have you know that the two red dots are the adjacent property owners. Both of those people, both of those residents signed letters of support for TRG. They're adjacent, they have no problem. The turquoise line going out to 441 shows the path of our traffic every day. The yellow dots represent letters of opposition outside that circle, which is the 500-foot radius for Palm Beach County notification. So now we have approximately 30 neighbors that are outside the affected area that don't like the landscape company on the road. One of the major concerns in those opposition letters were the bus stop and the children. So we contacted the school board, I talked to the dispatcher, we talked to the IT people, we talked to four different people in the school district. As it turns out, the bus stops are not affected by TRG landscaping. Their trucks leave before 8 o'clock, they come back after 4:30. The school bus stops are picked up in the morning, after that, and they're dropped off before TRG trucks come back in the afternoon. This is the neighborhood. You can see the turquoise route where we go every morning. I'm going to walk up to the screen, my laser pointer's not working. Those AP, those AP symbols are on agricultural building permits that are exempt from zoning regulations to the extent that they are requesting a reset. There are three landscape companies that need to relocate. This one has no approval. They have over 20 trucks leaving every day. I don't know how many employees they have. What do we have? Did you miss anything? No? Okay. We have a painting company here, yoga studio there. We have a realtor here, we have a pipe company there, we have a boat company dealer up there. Those three equestrian horse farms, they're very big, they have quite a bit of horse trailer traffic. The realtor itself is Pam Burns, Pam Banks here? Okay. Ms. Banks took it upon herself to talk to the neighborhood and see what they could do about opposing this request. I spoke with every resident on Anderson Lane. We sent them letters, we talked to them. There was one letter of opposition on Anderson Lane and it was the guy that's directly next to the illegal landscape company that has 15 or 20 trucks and over 50 employees every You can see how many people are outside the affected area. They're not possibly affected because they live way to the west or behind TRG. So when TRG leaves in the morning, they're gone for the day. The realtor, Ms. Banks sold TRG their property in 2016 and said, this is a great neighborhood for landscapers. I was also told that she shortly after called code enforcement about the violation. That's not being a good neighbor. We've all heard good fences make good neighbors. We've reached out to everyone that is in our affected area on the entire Anderson Lane. And there's a difference between activists and the cancel culture. Now, one of the people that signed the opposition letter ever came to TRG with any sort of concern. So I really, I really hope that you don't put TRG in the same classification as the companies and heritage farms.
Did you have any last, did you have any last comments you'd like to make, sir?
I'm making it as quick as I can, yes.
Okay, your 20 minutes has expired?
It has.
Yes, sir.
I wasn't watching the clock.
Okay. Do you have any remaining comments?
Okay, my last comment. I asked this board for approval so we can continue to the Board of County Commission hearing and let them make the final decision on the road waiver. If you do deny this project, I ask that you consider a couple of conditions on our behalf rather than paving a mile and a half of road and adding a sidewalk, considering the size of our business. Give us six months to monitor from code enforcement. Let us show that we are not disturbing the neighborhood. Support in mitigating any code enforcement fines should be lose. Direct staff to rewrite the landscape code so it fits the industry. For some reason, the provisions put in the landscape service code, nobody can make them. The big companies can't make them, the small companies can't afford them. A Class A use is at least $75,000. A larger company, you're talking $250,000 to get a Class A use with all the accompanying documents that are required, surveys, site plans, all that stuff. That's a big chunk of change. So I will ask the zoning commissioner one more time, please consider the approval on the waiver so we can consider it to the Board of County Commissioners next week. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Staff, your report?
Okay. We actually have, we'll have two presenters and I'll have Scott Cantor go first. And he is going to present relative to the subdivision waiver because that has to do with our land development regulations on the road. And then I'll have Donna Adelsberger present the variances and then the Class A conditional use.
Awesome.
Okay. And Scott, slides are encumbered in mine, so bear with me for a second while I pull them up. Just for the record, Donna Adelsberger with the zoning division.
Good morning. Scott Cantor with the Land Development Division, speaking on the subdivision waiver. So the access requirements for all properties have to be subject to Article 11 E2A2, and it provides a table that defines what lane width, sidewalks, and, you know, what roadway standard is required for access for given properties or uses. So being a commercial use, they are required to have access to a non-planned collector roadway. It's an 80-foot road, 12-foot lanes, sidewalk on both sides. And there's also a, you know, a structural component in our engineering design standards manual that these roadways have to be built to. And it's, you know, it's anticipating, you know, trucks, wider vehicles, that's why the wider lanes, 12 instead of 10. So on the table to the left there, that's our non-planned collector standard requirements. There's a friction course, structural course, a base course, a subgrade. So Mr. Fogner said, yeah, in 2002, there were plans that were drawn up to rebuild some of these roads. 105th and Anderson Lane were reconstructed as part of an MSTU project that was finalized in 2006. The project reconstructed these roads to local residential standards, not non-planned collector. Some of the locations you'll see just have three inches of cold mix asphalt over a 12-inch compacted, stapled subgrade. And what they didn't really show is in the locations of the intersections of those roads, they were built to the typical local residential road, which is a 12-foot compacted subgrade, eight inches of base and an inch and a half of asphalt. So that would actually, nowadays, we do everything by structural number, local, local and non-planned collector. So you'll see the structural number for a non-planned collector is 3.01, a local road's 2.31. So there are locations at the intersections within this area that do meet local residential standards, but for like the straightaway segments, they used an alternative section for whatever reason that doesn't even meet today's local residential standards. So the, you know, the waiver, it was okay. So essentially, and to get into the rights of way, to get to this property, you have to take 52nd Place South to 105th and then head west on Anderson Lane. So there are three roads. None of those three roads meet today's standards for commercial development because it's a residential neighborhood. 52nd Place South has a mix of 60-foot to 80-feet of right-of-way. 105th and Anderson Lane have 60-foot right-of-way easements that were deeded to the county as part of that roadway program. Looks like they started in the late 90s, probably design, construction, acquisition, or design and acquisition. So Jim was also right, the Board of County Commissioners, as part of the whole landscape services, co-located with wholesale nursery uses, did create a subdivision waiver. It's a type 2 waiver that goes to the Board of County Commissioners. So we did, this is the fourth one you guys have seen. The other three were all in heritage farms. They applied to AR, so agridential, agricultural residential in either the rural service area or urban exurban area, which is this, not AGR PUD. Those have different location regulations altogether, or access regulations. We do have two conditions of approval in Exhibit C2. So if, we are recommending denial, but if you do recommend approval, the two conditions, one of which Mr. Fogner referenced, was to reconstruct those three roads to meet the standards. So not, and that would be within, or, yeah, to reconstruct the roads to meet those standards. And then also address the 90-degree bend, which you'd see where 105th turns into Anderson Lane. Working with the traffic division at roadway, we found if they were to expand the pavement on either side of the bend, add additional striping, there is existing signage out there, reduce speed around the, around the bend. But, you know, when this roadway was constructed and all of those things were put into place, we're doing it for a local residential road with residential traffic, not introducing additional trucks and commercial-type traffic. I think I covered the waiver. Give any questions? If not, we're going to go to Donna.
Who would pay to redo those roads? Is it Palm Beach County redoing them or is it the, is it the?
So the...
I'm sorry, we're not open for public comments, sir.
The MSTU project typically starts with a petition by residents, it has to go to the board. It's a split cost.
Okay.
So we'll do the design and construction and the residences do pay and the county does pay. There's a portion that each of us pay and it's typically, there's an assessment for X amount of years and, yes. And but we...
That's what would happen in the C, you said C2 issue, if we voted for approval?
Yeah, so yes, condition, we have conditions in C2 that would actually require TRG Farms to reconstruct the roads to meet the minimum standards.
They would, they would pay for that?
They would pay for that, not the county.
So that was my question. They would pay to redo the road from 441 all the way out to?
Their property.
Well, I guess you'd have to take it to the...
112...
End of the road, wouldn't you?
We would, well, they would have to transition, do appropriate tapers back to the typical local residential section. Yes, the TRG.
That's my question, thank you.
Can I ask a quick question? I want to make sure I understand that. So is the county willing to participate in them extending it at all?
No.
Even though it's a betterment of the road, they will contribute nothing?
Correct. It's not programmed.
It's not, yeah, okay.
Caused by us.
Okay.
I'm sorry, one last question, Scott. Cost of those assessments?
That's always a tough one. I did talk with roadway ballpark and I'm not sure if it was including, you know, there's engineering fees, design, labor costs, everything's fluctuating right now. The original cost, like the cost for 105th Anderson and 108th, which is now Meekler, I think is what it's called, that project was about $560,000 15 years ago. When I spoke to get some number from another division internally, they said 450 to 600 for this condition. But I'm not, I can't, you know, I'm not totally sure what that number includes.
Understand.
Labor, design, that could just be materials.
And one follow-up question. What is the radius of people that would be included in the assessment portion of having to pay for this road? Is it just the...
No, this, the, what, this condition is just for TRG Farms to reconstruct the road.
Okay.
The original reconstruction was part of an MSTU project that the residents and the county all worked on it together. But any further improvements would be solely on TRG Farms.
Thank you.
Okay, so that kind of jumped us partway through the application, but again, good morning, Donna Adelsberger with the zoning division. Before you is TRG Farms. They are located on the south side of Anderson Lane, approximately seven tenths of a mile west of State Road 7. They have a future land use designation of low residential 2 and a zoning of agricultural residential. The site contains 5.11 acres. They have three requests before you. One request is for a five zoning variances to eliminate a portion of an incompatibility buffer along the south property line, to eliminate landscape islands within the landscape service. to eliminate landscape islands within the Landscape Service area, to eliminate the foundation planting along the Building B, which is located in the rear of the site, to reduce the rear setback for Building B, to reduce the setback for the outdoor storage area. In addition is the subdivision waiver that Scott just spoke with you about, to reduce the minimum legal access, and then the Class A conditional use to allow the Landscape Service use. As Mr. Fronker indicated, that they did have a DRO application in for the Wholesale Nursery. And through consultation with the agricultural consultant that the county has brought on board, a determination was made after a few months in the process that the Wholesale Nursery in and of itself was exempt from local zoning regulations. Therefore, that application was withdrawn. The only thing the board is looking at today is the Landscape Service use on the property. So, a little more in regards to the five variances. As they're indicated here in the different colors is the setbacks for the building, which staff is unable to find any building permits on, nor was the applicant able to provide those building permits. There is the setback for the outdoor storage area for where he's proposing to park his trucks, as well as elimination of a portion of the buffer because of the encroachment of the building in that setback. The subdivision waiver would be for Anderson Lane, the width of it. And then the conditional use would be for the Landscape Service, which, if this pointer will be nice to me, no, is in the rear portion of the site. Staff has reviewed all of the findings for a Type 2 variance. And based on the findings, the applicant has failed to address all of items A through F. And those can be found on Pages 3 and 4 in your report for this application, as well as the ones that are shown here on the slide. As Scott has already addressed, the subdivision waivers, they failed to address his items, which are also shown here on the slide. They are additional findings that have to be made that they're in compliance with. And then the last item before the board is the Class A conditional use for the Landscape Service in and of itself. Staff has determined that they failed to meet items B, C, D, and F, as noted on Pages 6 through 8 in your staff report. We want to clarify that there is a typo in your report in regards to the article for the findings for a Class A conditional use. Staff typed too many Bs in there. One of them should be a number 2. Staff has received several letters and emails from the general public. As of the time of this report, there were 22 letters received in opposition from the general neighborhood. Staff does mail out within 500 feet of the affected parcel. However, as it is a public hearing, public comments is allowed from anybody within the neighborhood. So, yes, there are applicants or property owners that did supply letters that are outside the 500 feet, but the signs on the property allowed them to be able to make their comments to this board, of which you have several comment cards on your desk. Staff is recommending denial of all the five variances. However, should the board choose to approve those, we have included in our packet conditions of approval in Exhibit C1. Staff is recommending denial of the subdivision waiver. Should the board recommend approval, there are conditions of approval in Exhibit C2. And we are recommending denial of the conditional use. Should the board choose to approve or recommend approval, then we have conditions in Exhibit C3. I want to clarify that this site is AR. The parcels that were referenced in Heritage Farms are also AR. They are not AGR, PUD, which were subject to different regulations under the Landscape Service project. Landscape Service has always been a commercial use in the code. There are several items that staff had listed as certification issues on the site plan, as well as the justification, that were not addressed by the agent within the extended timelines for the 120-day deadline. So, therefore, staff brought it forward with a recommendation of denial. However, there are conditions to correct those items should the board choose to recommend approval. And that is the end of my presentation.
If I can continue on just a little bit, as Donna had mentioned, commercial use, the Landscape Service is a commercial use. It is not an agricultural use and has never been an agricultural use. It, it, prior to our code amendments, Landscape Service was allowed as a necessary use. To be a necessary use, you have to be 30% in size and you have to be 30% of your sales receipts. So, that is part of what had triggered our code amendment because the Landscape Service use was making more money than the nursery in itself. So, I just want to put that out, out there. So, whether we didn't change the code, those uses would have been in violation of our current code as a necessary, of the prior code as a necessary use. I want to point out, he referenced multiple times about the affected area and the residents. There is one way in and one way out, very similar to Heritage Farms to this community. So, those people that may not be directly adjacent still have to travel those roads to get to their homes. And the agricultural use is not what is in question for this particular board. We did have to determine what part was an agricultural use in order to determine the size of the Landscape Service. There is a direct correlation between the size of the nursery and the size that we would allow as a Landscape Service. So, there was a lot of discussion at the beginning on the size of that wholesale nursery for us to determine how big that Landscape Service use could be. So, I just want to add that into our presentation as well.
Wendy, can I ask you a question? In that circle, that 500 feet, how many letters did we get that are in the circle versus outside the circle?
I don't have that information.
No idea. Okay. Just curious.
If I may just add, the reason some of the permits were revoked is because they were classified as ag at one point, but were not used as ag. For instance, the garage, when we went and looked at it, had nothing but lawnmowers and a lawnmower service area. So, that's why that permit was revoked. And that's why I was running into some problems with that. And again, trying to, like Wendy said, trying to get these, these are commercial uses, trying to go into residential areas. It's just difficult. Some can make it, some can't, but that's, that's the problem with all the Landscape Services.
Do we have any, any questions for staff at this moment? All right, ladies and gentlemen, we're gonna open this up to public comment at this time. Please keep in mind, to my left, your right is a timer. You will all have three minutes to speak if you have submitted a card or your comments will be read into record if that was, if that is what you requested. Also, please be polite and courteous to whoever is speaking. I don't want any outbursts, no cheering, no applause. Let us get through this and hear everyone and afford everyone the right to speak and the respect to do so, please. Thank you so much. Your name will be called. You have a chance to come to the right podium or to the left podium, depending on which way you sit. Commissioner Burke?
Okay, if I could please have Angelo Rizzo and at the other podium, Michael Proctor, please.
When you come to the podium, please state your name and address for the record, please.
Morning. My name is Mr. Rizzo. I've lived in Seminole Ranches for 42 years. I moved there because it was a residential community with zoning restrictions, which, that's what we're worried about now. The owner of the property we're talking about blatantly disregarded the restrictions and run his business through there anyway. He don't live there, just his business. The business has destroyed some of our roads, not only his, but, and it, it's destroyed a lot of the kids. Kids, you don't see them no more. The roads are, the traffic is not good enough. It's nasty. And it wasn't built for these trucks, heavy equipment. And it's costing the county money because they gotta repair them, patch them up. My wife's a nurse. She's gotta leave my house 15, 20 minutes earlier to get to work if she gets behind any of these trucks and trailers. So, I'll make it short. I just wish we ignore the zoning, please do not reward him by ignoring the zoning restrictions and granting this variance. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
And could I please have Joe Fisher?
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Michael Proctor. I live at 10720 56 Court South, Lake Worth, 33449. I wish to waive my speaking time to allow Pam Banks to speak for me. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have paperwork I have brought to give to you guys. I'm not too sure who to give it to.
Do we have a?
Motion to receive and file.
Motion made by Commissioner Beatty to receive and file the paperwork presented, seconded by Commissioner Scarborough. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, just for clarification, will I get my three minutes or am I eating up my three minutes as well, speaking for Mr. Proctor?
Oh.
No, you're, you're not going there. Hang on one second.
Okay.
Opposed, motion to receive and file passes. Hang on one second, sir. Wendy, can I get clarification real quick? I believe it's gonna be for Scott. In order for additional time donated to a person, there's a certain number of cards, I believe, that have to be, is that number 5? In order to extend time?
That's what I recall.
That's what we've done in the, I remember in the past, I believe.
Well, according to the board's rules of procedure, allowing the use of a speaker's time by another individual is within the chair's discretion.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
And although that is the Board of County Commissioners' rules, because there's nothing on point specifically for the zoning commission, I would go by that.
Thank you. Okay, sir.
Ready? Hi. Thank you for letting me speak. My name's Joseph Fisher. I live at 107957 Place South. I'm a 20-year-plus resident. Let me tell you why I moved to my neighborhood. I moved there because it was a residential neighborhood. I had children. I wanted them to grow up in a great neighborhood without trafficking and out, and it was a one-way road. So, when me and my wife found our neighborhood, we fell in love with it. We still love our neighborhood, but we're very disappointed in the situation. It's no longer a residential neighborhood. Heavy equipment runs through it all day long, Monday through Friday. We can't, we can't go through our neighborhood in the morning. We can't get out, traffic, and we can't get in in the afternoon. The traffic is astronaut crazy in the morning, and it's just not fair. Our roads are being destroyed. I actually sent pictures to you guys. And whoever I sent them to, I want to thank you very much. Within two days, you guys were out there and you fixed our potholes. That was awesome. I greatly appreciate it. But we don't feel safe in our neighborhood anymore. We really don't feel safe. Our children used to be able to ride bicycles up and down the streets. My wife and the good ladies in the neighborhood would walk in the neighborhood during, during the day. They will no longer walk on that side of the neighborhood during business hours, Monday through Friday. We just don't feel safe. I personally have almost been ran off, I was ran off the road by one of landscape companies, not this gentleman's, but one of the other ones, from coming down 57th Place, because the traffic, the road is so thin, they put me into the dirt. Just not really acceptable. I want my children, my grandchildren to be able to drive in our neighborhood, their bicycles, and be able to walk in the street and not have any worries. Our neighborhood has changed so dramatically in the past seven years. I was one of the original people that sent you guys emails on the situation with the other landscaper. I don't know what the right thing is. I know that this is a residential neighborhood and, in my opinion, commercial should not be there. I grew up in a landscape company. My father's been in the business for 40 years. In 40 years, he's never once parked in a residential zone because he had respect for the neighbors. He parked in the commercial development because that's what's right to do. These landscapers have, this gentleman claims he's got 20, 20 employees. That's 20 more trucks in and out, 20 more cars in and out in the morning, 20, the trucks go in and out every single day. The roads are being destroyed. The interesting thing is, if you come from 441, straight down our roads, the roads are filthy and they have trash on them all the time. Where's the trash stop? At the end of the landscape properties. There's no more trash there. Where the roads are clean, the roads are only destroyed from 441 all the way to the landscape companies. At the end of landscape companies, you drive through our neighborhood, our roads are nice. They've been destroyed to that point. We paid for these roads. It was in our taxes. We paid for this and they're allowing them to destroy it. So, I'm asking you kindly, I'm pleading, I'm pleading with you to please keep our neighborhood a residential neighborhood. Please keep it our beautiful residential neighborhood. That's all I could ask. Thank you very much.
And can I have Rafael Balistero?
Okay. Yes.
You're Ms. Pamela Banks? Before, before you start, one second. There was one gentleman who donated their time to Ms. Pamela Banks. Are there any other requests of participants that have submitted a card to donate your time to Pamela Banks? Please state your name. Ma'am, what is your name? I'm sorry, one more time?
Chris Balistero.
Chris Balistero? Is there anybody else?
Mr. Chair.
Ma'am.
I do have signed notices from several other residents in our neighborhood that I am, have the ability to speak on their, does that, no, okay.
I can't accept that, no ma'am. We will, we will extend your time to five minutes, ma'am.
Okay.
You have the mic.
Thank you so much. I will state my name as Pamela Banks. I live at 5473 Meekler Drive, Lake Worth, Florida, 33449. On behalf of the, the people that have given me their time, I want to begin my statement by saying what Mr. Fronker said was incorrect. I at no time told TRG, as a Realtor, that it was a great place to run a landscaping business. What was told maybe by the seller, because I was the listing agent, I have no control over. So, I do want to set, set the record straight. I wear many hats, as all of us do in this room. For Seminole Ranches, I am finally referred to as the mayor. And for my home, I'm called Mom. I'm called Pam Ma, which is a nickname for Grandma. And for work, I am a Realtor. I understand the value and the importance of protecting private property rights. Today, I wear a hat of a concerned citizen. As I speak on behalf of myself and many of the other residents and my family, we stand unified in opposition of the Type 2 variances, subdivision waiver, Class A conditional use, that is being requested by TRG Farms LLC, a landscaping business. Just like our neighbors to the south in Heritage Farms, we live in unincorporated Palm Beach County annexed by the city of Lake Worth. Just like Heritage Farms, we are in, we are zoned agricultural residential, which means we have large parcels, we enjoy planting our plants, and having our animals. Just like Heritage Farms, we too have a problem with landscaping companies moving into our residential neighborhood and running their businesses. We have watched as these companies have come in and changed the look of our rural community. Over the years, we have sat on the sidelines and waited for our turn from the county as the residents of Heritage Farms have fought for what they rightly deserve and all of us deserve as homeowners, a place that we call home, that is safe and secure. I submitted to someone, here, Donna. I'm submitting the information from an article that was published in the Palm Beach Post on. on May twenty-first, which reported unanimous vote by the county commissioner to rid Heritage Farms of the landscapers and to further deny any waivers from landscapers. We are looking for the same consistency to be shown to our neighborhood. The property owned by TRG is on Anderson Lane. Now, you talked about five hundred feet. Our properties actually are three hundred feet wide in the front, so you're not gonna get much in five hundred feet from his property. He does not live in the property. It is strictly being used to run a business. What that means to all of us living in our homes is that there's additional trucks coming in, lawn trucks, dozens of workers coming in in the morning, leaving in the afternoon, and then, of course, we have some trucks coming in with fuel and other items, plus a food truck. Now, that is uncommon in a residential neighborhood. Our lifestyle has been disrupted. We are now forced to share our roads with strangers coming into our neighborhood. And we are also given the, given opportunities that we are asking you to come and help us protect the rural character of our neighborhood for generations to come. There's no doubt, if this waiver is passed, it will open the flood door for others to follow, which will forever change our lives, our properties, and the secure and safety of all the residents of the neighborhood. We ask you to oppose and deny these variances. Thank you.
Motion to receive and file. Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Beatty and seconded by Commissioner Caliendo to receive and file. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes six-zero.
Can I get Dirk Sichel? Okay.
Go ahead, sir.
Good morning. My name is Rafael Balastero. I live at fifty-seven sixteen McLare Drive, Lake Worth, Florida, three three four four nine. My speech is probably gonna be a little bit short, as Joe Fisher and Pamela and those have touched on some of the topics, but my wife and I, we built our home there in nineteen ninety-six. And we built our home there because we felt safe. We enjoyed the neighborhood. Had a nice rural feel to it. It's own residential agricultural. At this point in our lives, we've raised our children there. We look forward to having our grandchildren there and have our grandchildren be able to ride their bikes on the streets and things and not be afraid for safety with the trucks and everything else that's there. The county has a comprehensive plan, and this comprehensive plan goes into detail to segregate residential versus commercial operations. Along with that goes roadway design standards. I'm quite familiar with roadway design standards, as my career has been in roadway construction. I have been personally involved in constructing many of the county's roads through hard drives of Delray, R&amp;D paving, now Amazon Construction. So the roads, the road criteria that county uses, you know, you have your residential and local streets, you have commercial, next level is commercial and collector roads, and then the heavier roads are called thoroughfare roads. And as outlined earlier by that gentleman, there's certain thicknesses of asphalt and rock and everything else. And as you expand from the residential local up into the commercial and collector levels, you have sidewalks and street lights and things of that nature to provide safety. You know, at this point, we have a street, we have drainage swales on the sides. So when we decide to go for a walk in the neighborhood, we're walking in the street. And now we have to be careful and, you know, jump off into the swale ditch to get away from the commercial traffic that's there. As Pamela mentioned, this operation, they don't even live there. They have multiple trucks there. They say they only have four, but all the employees that come in creates heavier traffic in, creates heavier traffic out. They have fuel trucks there, there's fuel delivery trucks that come in, there's lunch trucks that provide. We want to stay feeling safe in this neighborhood. So we ask, please, Palm Beach County, stay with your comprehensive plan and keep this a residential neighborhood, and don't allow it to become a commercial neighborhood. I have some pictures with the condition of the roadway. Fifty-second Place has in excess of fifty roadway patches. Go take a look and you'll see. All right, I'm sorry, my time is up, I guess, so. There you go. Thank you.
Sir, do we have a motion to receive and file?
Motion, receive and.
Motion made by Commissioner Caliendo, seconded by Commissioner Scarborough to receive and file the photos. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
And can I get Daryl, can I get Daryl Stern, please? The other party? You pass?
Go ahead, sir.
Uh, yes, good morning. My name is Dirk Sichel. I'm a little different than everybody else that's spoken. I really don't have a dog in this fight. I was the gentleman that provided aerial photos for TRG for their cause today. I'm a professional commercial drone pilot. I have a background with providing surveying drone services in the state and a background as a petroleum landman, where I've had the opportunity to review titles all over the country and seeing the history of what happened. So I understand eminent domain, I understand zoning a lot of these issues. The reason I'm here is, I spent four days out there, excuse me, acquiring these images and just taking a look at what was going on. I found this to be a very quiet neighborhood, period. I drove around, I did find the residents walking their dogs, being out on the roads, that type of thing, but I really didn't see the types of things that I'm hearing here today. I spent four days at this corner intersection specifically, watching the traffic to see what was going on. And what I saw was there's a lot of heavy equipment that goes through this area. However, it was equestrian, it was people with boats, it seemed like everybody had a trailer out there or a huge truck. The TRG traffic that came through on those four mornings that I saw were anywhere from two to four trucks, and that was it. So my point in being here today is I think that there's common sense and there's a way to interpret this. I'm just not seeing the impact that these people are talking about, honestly. I respect what they're doing. I don't live there, but I do believe in, you know, people having opportunities. I don't know the exact zoning laws. I'm getting a lot of calls for people having zoning issues out there needing aerial support so that they can come and have meetings, whatever. So my point is grandfathering these people in. I've found that they have done an excellent job of keeping up their frontage, they've helped their neighbors. Before I flew the drone, I did talk to a couple of the neighbors. They were in favor of allowing these people to stay. So that's all I have to say. I respect everybody here. Y'all work it out. God bless you.
Sir, before you leave the podium, you didn't state your address. Can you state your name and address for the record?
Yes, Dirk Sichel, thirty-nine hundred County Line Road, apartment four-eight, Equesta, Florida. I was there doing services.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Good luck, y'all.
Can I please get Michelle McPoyle and Mark, is it Lasika, Lasila? Sorry.
Go ahead, ma'am. Please state your name and address for the record.
Good morning. My name is Michelle McPoyle. I live at one zero seven three eight Fifty-seventh Place South, Lake Worth, Florida. And we moved there in nineteen ninety-nine, and the roads were dirt roads. So there was potholes everywhere. We understand potholes. We are a contractor, a painting contractor, and we moved out there and we decided to move our business out there. The neighborhood at the time said no, and we politely moved our business outside of the neighborhood but kept our resident there. There's fifty-two homes in this neighborhood, so to have thirty people opposing the fifty-two homes of the fifty-two homes, that's more than half of the neighborhood, is saying, "No, thank you." Uh, we, as a community of people, we get together very often to celebrate. I've never met this man. He isn't a part of our neighborhood. He comes there to park there, to do whatever he does, but, you know, one morning, um, my mate was leaving the neighborhood, and as other people had described, we not only have golf carts, bikers, horse people, running the roads. One morning, my mate was driving out of the neighborhood and literally one of the landscape trailers hit, one of the landscape people hit a biker. And it was, it was so traumatic for him, it, he was like, "Oh, my God, this is, this is really ridiculous." So, yeah, there's one way in, there's one way out. We are a very quiet community that has, we need to combat this, this flux of people, flux of traffic going in and out. As I said, we moved our commercial services outside of the neighborhood. And that's, you know, if this gentleman would like to live in our neighborhood and feel the neighborhood and move his services out, a lot of our residential neighbors, they do grow their trees and their, it's agricultural, but it's residential. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
And can I please have John Schwank?
Sir?
Hi, my name is Mark Lasila, and I live at one oh eight three four Tammy's Trail, Lake Worth. I've lived there over thirty years, and what brought us to the neighborhood was just having a little bit of space and the equestrian and having animals and stuff, and we really, we really love the neighborhood. And personally, we love the neighborhood so much that we've purchased two additional residences that I have rented out now that are in escrow for my children. So one day, when they get married, they're gonna, you know, be longtime tenants there too. I relate to most of the things, the points that have been brought up. In the mornings, I used to go for a walk around the whole block, and I went all the way to four forty-one and back, but the traffic is really something else. The, the employees that are frequenting or coming to the nursery, seems like they're always running late, and, you know, they're really speeding, they got their windows rolled down, music blasting, and not paying attention when they're on Fifty-second Place. And every time I see a car coming, I gotta go stand in the swale. I have an eleven-year-old daughter, and there's no way I can let her ride her bike anywhere around the neighborhood because, like I said, the employees are either running late or then they can't wait to leave after four o'clock. But that traffic is something else, and they're, they're always in a hurry. But I appreciate you giving us the opportunity to speak and hear our concerns. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
And finally, James Opalik?
Sir, you have the floor?
My name is John Schwank. I live at ten nine eight seven Tammy's Trail in, in the neighborhood, Lake Worth, Florida. I've lived in the neighborhood for twenty-four years. I'm a technology and data analyst consultant by trade. Quick history of the neighborhood. Nineteen seventy-two, Henrik Fulman was approved by the county to create this neighborhood, our neighborhood. The paperwork filed with the county specifically noted that it was being created as an exclusive recreational residential community. A covenant was created, in effect, to protect that. The covenant was for thirty years, automatically gets renewed every ten years unless it's, unless it's opposed. My particular issue, by the way, is not with TRG or any particular person, because indeed as others have stated, there is no person in the neighborhood that we're talking about. It's a company. I do not have an issue with that. By the way, as far as the other things, as far as trailers going in and out, yeah, we do have trailers going in and out because the neighborhood was designed to be residential, recreational. There are horses. We have eight of the lots are designated as equestrian, by the way. There's five, I guess, six total lots that are zoned as, as nurseries. My issue is with the potential impact. Landscaping under the, the current definition, especially with the ordinance twenty nineteen zero thirty-nine that others have referenced, basically provide for a commercial enterprise. Others have asked for and been granted access to put up, you know, you're gonna put up administrative buildings, you're gonna put up speakers to, to, to talk to employees that are happening, that are working throughout the, the property. This, this isn't consistent with residential neighborhoods. And once again, I have no particular issues with a particular landscaping company. It's just that, first of all, I don't think it's well-defined for, within a residential neighborhood because it allows for a commercial operation. I'm also concerned about the impact. If the variances are granted, then there's absolutely no reason that the other five nurseries in the neighborhood should not also be granted the same variances with the same restrictions. Talking about, they're asking for eighteen parking spaces, twelve additional for trailers. If everybody was granted that, very simply, we're looking at three hundred and sixty vehicle trips in and out of the neighborhood every day by people who don't live there. For a neighborhood with only, by the way, I think it's sixty-eight houses. Sixty-eight houses, three hundred and sixty people don't even live there. But anyway, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Oh, I'm sorry. My initial neighbor, or my immediate neighbor, Heim, who was unable to game, did request that this be entered. I don't know how that happens.
That's fine, just go ahead and give it to staff.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. Motion to receive and file? There needs to be a person. Motion made by Commissioner Caliendo, seconded by Commissioner Scarborough. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion to receive and file passes six-zero. Thanks, Sam. Go ahead, sir.
All right, good morning. Thank you. My name's James Opalik. I live at forty-one ten Keyline Boulevard in Boynton Beach. I'm the director of operations for TRG Landscape. This might be a little anticlimactic. I thought maybe I would go before all the other people, and I just wanted to let you guys know that from the moment we've moved in, we, we went to the immediate neighbors, we, we spoke with them. We've tried to do the best we possibly could to be neighborly. I'm in charge of the crews, sending them out, bringing them in. I've delayed them at times. We're fully aware of the traffic situation out at four forty-one, trying to get onto four forty-one, because most especially our competitor down the street who has three times as many trucks as we do. So I've tried to take it on personally, hold the trucks back, and so we didn't clog up four forty-one or the, or the wait to get onto four forty-one. I guess at the end, I would just say, if you guys do consider giving us approval or maybe giving us some, you know, continued circumstances that we need to address, that we will be neighborly and we will try to do whatever we can to continue to work with the neighborhood where this can possibly work out. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that.
Okay, now, that's all that wished to speak, but we.
What is your name, sir? I'm sorry? You have three minutes. You have the floor, sir.
Found me?
Yep.
All right. My name is Mike Morley. I live at one zero nine three eight Fifty-Fifth Street South. As mentioned earlier, I'm, I'm outside the five hundred feet, but I also have just one way to get in and out of that neighborhood. But I wanted to, I don't know all Uh, but I wanted to, uh, I don't know all the zoning laws. I don't, uh, plan on learning all of those. I just wanna live comfortably in, in the county and be a good, uh, citizen and contributor. Uh, but I wanted to give you a little bit of my background. Uh, I grew up, my parents were absent and by age 16, I lived on my own. I drove about 15 miles one way to my high school. On a good night, I mixed in hamburger with my macaroni and cheese so I could pay my rent and keep my power on. I've worked diligently my whole life. By age 17, I didn't know what I was gonna do. I knew I needed a roof over my head when I graduated, so I joined the U.S. Army. The summer in between 11th, 12th grade and high school, I went off to boot camp. I came back my senior year, found a place to put a roof over my head in an apartment that was 20 miles away from school. And then I graduated high school, 3.0, above a 3.0, went off to Fort Sam Houston, Texas, went through training to be a combat medic in a combat support hospital pharmacy specialist. I was determined my whole life to make sure that when I have a family, that they have it better than I had it. I, I wanted to make sure of that. I also, uh, after I met my wife, uh, her, her mom decided to retire. She has a handicapped sister that'll never leave home and she goes to the Palm Beach County Arc every day. I did my due diligence before I moved into this neighborhood. I also had Ms. Pam Banks as my realtor. She happens to also be my next-door neighbor. I made sure before I did anything that I would be allowed to build a second small flat on the property to take care of my mother-in-law and sister-in-law because sometimes I think that's what's wrong in the world. People just don't do that. Uh, need to take care of some others. I decided to do that. But before I moved in, which I live there, I made sure it was gonna be something that would be approved by those zoning laws and all of that. But I feel like that's not the case here and it's blatant disregard. The best analogy I could come up with is buying your dream home. You've got this beautiful view from your front yard and it's nice and quiet. And one day, a truck pulls up in the front of your yard and it parks there every day and it makes this loud noise when it backs up and it beeps and all of these things and you're just kinda frustrated with it. So you just, hey, why, this is a no parking zone. It's clear that you shouldn't park here. And, uh, the truck shows up there every single day. Uh, and you find out that the truck parks there because it's cheaper to pay the fine to park there than the legitimate parking spot in the vicinity or nearby. And they make so much money that it's cheaper to pay the fines than the parking. So then we find ourselves at the end, the person that parked their truck there wants to come and instead of making things right, change the zone so that they can park in front of your house and ruin your view that you worked so diligently to have. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Um, we have a number of cards of people that do not wish to speak but would like their comments read and then some cards of people who would just like their names read, they don't wish to speak, that are in opposition. Okay? And again, I'm gonna apologize ahead of time if I mispronounce anybody's name. Don't take it personally. I'm trying. Okay? All right. Um, thank you.
We'll hold you responsible.
Thank you. Joyce Gaffman. Um, roads not built in opposition. Roads not built for heavy trucks or machinery. Let one go approved. Other... Okay, okay. Other, and others will follow. Not compatible with neighborhood. Okay? Donna Proctor is in opposition. We do not want this zoning change. The truck-trailer traffic damages our roads, causes danger for our children waiting for buses, et cetera. Deborah Pogge in opposition. Small residential area, too much traffic, dangerous fuel trucks, enter and fill tanks on property, roads not safe for recreational activity. Daniel Pogge in opposition. Want on record the danger of traffic in a residential neighborhood. Chris Ballastero in opposition. I oppose any commercial business operation in our residential neighborhood. It has created higher traffic flows and I feel unsafe. William M. Banks in opposition. I have lived there for 37 years. Until recently, it has been amazing. I don't appreciate the traffic or the class of people they are moving in and out every day that don't live here. There is a traffic and safety and security issue here. Okay? And the following, um, no comments, um, but in opposition. George Cummins. Lori Schwank. Alyssa Fisher. Joel's June Stoffel. Will Harrison Kirk. Irma Carol Kirk. Jeff Adams. Jerand... Jerand Phan. I am so sorry. There we go.
Absolutely opposed.
Okay. All right. Opposed will be submitted for the record. Um, your, your name and address is on here, so it will be submitted. In opposition. Susan Swan in opposition. And one in support, Jen Reinlich. And those are all the cards we have.
All right. That concludes our public comments section. Now, I will go ahead and open up the Commissioners for Commissions.
Mr. Chair, if I may, um, now may be appropriate time if staff or the applicant have any responses to any of the comments that were made?
Yes, sir. Absolutely. Um, staff, do we have any comments or responses to anything that was said?
There was one woman, Ms. Banks did say, um, make a mention about being annexed by, um, Lake Worth and it, this is in the unincorporated area. It's not in the, in the city. That was the only thing that I noticed.
This is unincorporated Palm Beach County? Absolutely.
And I would like to speak on the comprehensive plan. This property is low residential, um, two units per acre. These lots are five-acre tracts and two-and-a-half acre tracts and they do have one way in, one way out. And the comprehensive plan recognizes these areas as lower residential areas. And the rules that are in play, all of the, the rules that are being discussed for variances today are in the Unified Land Development Code in order to implement the comprehensive plan. So there are instances where properties come before you and they're asking for commercial development on a commercial roadway and it doesn't have a variance. I mean, more often than not, if a commercial request is coming before the board, it doesn't have a variance associated with it because it meets the ULDC requirements. So I did wanna speak on that note because one of the gentlemen spoke about the comprehensive plan. This is a, for practical purposes, a rural neighborhood, even though it is low residential two and it is in the urban suburban tier. The smallest lot size is 2.5 acres. They also can't subdivide because of the subdivision regulations. So even though the comprehensive plan will give you two houses per acre, these property owners can't come forward with a subdivision to get two houses per acre. They, they don't have the water and sewer. The minimum lot size by health would be an acre, but even though they had that, they couldn't subdivide without a variance because you can't meet the subdivision regulations to have two houses. So that's one thing to keep in mind when the neighborhood's coming, all of the residents that were here within the neighborhood, their smallest lot size are 2.5, you know, and then it's about 50/50, about two-and-a-half acre lots or five-acre tracts.
Right. And I'll just let, like to also explain something. Someone in the audience, uh, requested this to be grandfathered in. In order to be grandfathered in, you have to be legal at one point in time and they were never legal at any point in time, so you cannot then grandfather.
Correct.
I have a question. So these lots, all these lots are on well and subcutane? Thank you.
Commissioner Caliendo?
Yeah, I have, um, a couple of issues. And I was going where Ramsey was, that was one of my first ones, that, um, to be grandfathered in, you just don't show up and buy a piece of property knowing what, what the zoning requirements were at the time and then all of a sudden expect it to be changed. And, and I have a real concern about setting a precedence here. Um, we'd be opening up the floodgates, uh, I think, for some issues in a residential neighborhood and I believe this, it needs to be kept residential. And I refer back to the fact that he knew what he was buying and now for us, come to us and look for us to, uh, you know, change this and put this traffic, even as bad as it is, onto that road is ridiculous.
Commissioner Caliendo, if you can hold on point of order real quick to, um, Scott's recommendation, does the applicant have any, um, further comments that they would like to make based on any of the comments made by the general public or by staff? Sir?
Yes.
Uh, I'm sorry. You, you are?
I am the applicant. Yeah, I'm red.
Right. Um, do we allow this gentleman to speak? He didn't submit a card, whereas the representative...
Oh, he's the, the, oh, the applicant on the application. He has a right to.
Okay. So if you'd like to come to the podium and make your comment?
Thank you. Thank you for giving me the chance to speak. My name is Jan Redlich. I did fill a card that I wasn't gonna fill. I live at 1065 Wild Cherry Land, Wellington, Florida, 33414. Um, I did buy the property in 2016 from Ms. Banks. Um, I was very forthcoming and very open about what my intentions with that property was. Uh, I've run landscape company for 20 years. Um, zoning is very muddled in terms of where you can run a landscape company and where you cannot. Um, Ms. Banks' comments, as I was, uh, inquiring about the property and I told her that I was putting a nursery and a landscape business in it, she didn't seem to have a problem with that at a, at a time. In fact, she said there's two other landscape companies in the neighborhood as well as, um, several businesses running out of these homes. I understand the people's frustration. Trust me, I do. I just need a place I can run my business out of it. I had every intention of doing everything right. Uh, every penny that I've made, I've invested in trying to make this property legal. Um, I have not had any of these neighbors come to me directly and told me about some of their concerns. Some of the things I would have immediately acted upon, if the lunch truck is a problem, I can make that go away immediately. I believe what's happening here is there's a bottled frustration from the many businesses that are run out of the neighborhood. There's pest control trucks, there's boats, there's paint company. Um, I do agree there's traffic and I do agree that I'm not making it any better, but my impact really is minimal, I believe, compared to the number of vehicles you see in the neighborhood. Um, and I have, again, made every effort to be neighborly, to keep the property beautiful. I think the frontage of my property is one of the nicest in the neighborhood, if I may say that. And it's all for the neighbors. It's all with an attempt to be neighborly and try to do the right thing. I just need a place to run my business out of. I bought a mini bus, half of my crew is, uh, bussed in, in one little bus. Um, I'm really, I've put forth every effort to just exist, to be able to provide for my family. Um, I, I respect everything the neighbors have said regarding the neighborhood in itself. It is a beautiful place. It is rural. Um, I think there is a space for all of us. And I just want the opportunity to be able to, to run the business out of it. And, uh, again, it's never been my intention to damage the lives of those people in the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Well, lem, lem, can I just finish where I was going with that?
Yes, we can, we can go back.
My concern is that, that say to the realtor that, uh, you know, I plan on doing this, that and the other, as a developer, I can tell you, anything we buy, anything we do, we go and do our own due diligence and check and see what the requirements are and what, where it's gonna go. We don't wait for the realtor. If he's got a question, he needs to go take it out on the realtor, not, you know, from us to fix his situation from what he made a mistake in not doing his due diligence when he bought this property.
Sam, wasn't, correct me if I'm wrong, but wasn't the landscape business allowed as a use? Not the, it's just the service, right? You could plant, you can run a nursery?
A nursery.
The wholesale nursery is allowed?
Right.
Um, but running...
Service.
The difference between a wholesale nursery and a landscape business is a nursery, you're growing the product on site and you may be delivering it and you may have a truck come on the property, load up your truck and deliver. Um, that's the nursery operation. The landscape service, they're providing lawn maintenance services on properties off-site. So that was only allowed as an accessory use.
Gotcha.
Only installation and such, less than 30% of the financial income coming in for the overall operation. So that's been the rule since, how long, Wendy? A long time.
Landscape services has always been a commercial use.
Yeah. And as Ramsey pointed out, as Ramsey pointed out, when, when the code enforcement went out there, they, what they found was lawnmowers in these buildings. So he's operating at services. Period. Answer your question mark.
Yeah. Um, I, I would just like to, I think, you know, I, I, I'm in agreement, um, you know, with my fellow commissioner here. Um, you know, it, I respect the gentleman, you know, who owns, you know, the business, but it's what you're legally entitled to do with the existing zoning, you know, requirements. And, um, we did have, I do, you know, believe, you know, with community, um, we did have, with all due respect, the three people that came in support, one of whom was yourself. Um, the other is a gentleman that does not live in the area, that was hired to do the drone, that spoke for, was there for four days, that doesn't live in the neighborhood at all. Um, we had zero letters in support that were submitted. However, we had 25 people who took time out of their day to come here to speak. We had 34 letters in opposition. So that says a lot, really, to, for me, about the neighborhood. And even if we were to grant or approve this application, the conditions of approval, I really don't think are realistic that they would be met. So at this point in time, I cannot support. I am in agreement with staff in addition to the obvious fact that the applicant did not provide staff with what they requested. So they didn't even meet, you know, they weren't even able to provide numerous, um, things that were requested of them. So my position right now is I do, you know, agree with staff. I can't support it.
Commissioner Bur.
I think I, I've always been fair and certainly I sympathize with the landscapers in Palm Beach County. I mean, we ought to do something. We, we've got to help the landscapers find the land that they need so that, um, they can service our communities. Otherwise, I, it's gonna get bad, especially for the western communities. However, I, I understand what these residents are saying. Um, he purchased land that it wasn't zoned for this and wasn't all that long ago and as much as I'd like to support the landscaper, I can't. Um, and we haven't in the past. We've also said in the past that we want support, a petition that's in code violation so that they could get out of, uh, their violations. So I couldn't support it, but the residents that are talking about code violations, Ramsey, the director of PB&Z, um, down here, all right. Um, I'm certain that he'd be happy to talk to you. You can give him a call. You can meet him after the meeting about the code violations that you're referring to. Is that enough work, Ramsey?
Yes, that's it. So I'm getting myself into even more trouble than I need to. But yes, I'd be more than happy to meet, uh, you folks after the meeting if you wanna just hang around and then we can talk about a comprehensive approach to your neighborhood.
Ramsey, you can thank Sherry for that one. Sorry.
Commissioner Kelly, do you have any comments? Commissioner Beatty?
Uh, yeah, just a couple here. I agree with, uh, my fellow commissioners. Um, I'm in support of, uh, staff on this item. Uh, it is unfortunate. Something's gotta be done. These are needed services in Palm Beach County and South Florida. There's just a tremendous amount of landscaping in every community and it's gotta be some way that they can exist in this county as a service industry, uh, somewhere. Uh, but we've denied other previous applicants on the same issues, so I can't see that, uh, we can set a precedent in cherry pick approvals. So I'm in, uh, agreement with staff.
And, I mean, my comments are gonna be pretty simple. I, I live in an area that's absolutely surrounded by nurseries and nurseries do a huge benefit and service to this community, but nurseries are different than landscaping services and as they've always been zoned commercial, then they will stay that way, um, at least per code right now. So I can't support this as well. Do we have a motion on the table?
Move to adopt a resolution denying a type-two variance to eliminate 100 feet of the type-two incompatibility buffer along the south property line, landscape islands within the off-street parking foundation planting around building B and to reduce the rare setback for building B and outdoor storage setback from the south property line.
Second.
We have a motion for denial by Commissioner Scarborough, seconded by Commissioner Caliendo. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes 6-0.
Move to recommend denial of a subdivision waiver to reduce the minimum legal access width.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Scarborough, seconded by Commissioner Caliendo to recommend denial. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes 6-0.
Move to recommend denial of a Class A conditional use to allow landscape service.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Scarborough, seconded by Commissioner Caliendo for denial. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes 6-0. And thank you very much. That concludes that item. I believe, uh, staff, we have... I believe, staff, we have other items.
Yes.
Yes, we're moving on to the final?
Yes. The last item that we have, item number seven, is our annual organization meeting, as well as our election of chair and vice chair.
Wonderful. Do we want to do the election first or the organizational portion?
The election would be fine first.
I believe I'm going to yield to Commissioner Caliendo, who had some thoughts and ideas.
I'm yielding to Sherry.
Okay. Commissioner Scarborough?
She was about to speak.
I like this. I would like to motion for Commissioner Burke to take over as chair, and Commissioner Kern as vice chair.
Second.
Discussions?
Just for discussion. I agree with you. Commissioner Burke deserves that right to take the chair. She did a fantastic job last month, baptism by fire in a very complicated application. However, I would like to see us rotate people into those positions that haven't had an opportunity yet to do that, kind of like the Board of County Commissioners does, to where, you know, if someone else is interested in doing it. I think Commissioner Kelly was interested. No, not?
Aw, come on, Commissioner.
I thought he was interested in becoming vice chair, but if not, then...
Come on over here. It's a lot of fun.
Yeah, come on.
I don't, I don't...
But I'd like to see us at least give that opportunity in future meetings, years, to ask those people if they're interested to rotate that in.
I'd agree with you, except that she hasn't had that opportunity to be chair, so I think this would be her.
I support Commissioner Scarborough's motion.
I'm okay if you want to.
Hold on.
Mark's been that position numerous times.
I'll go hang out with Scott. We'll put a glare on the cameras. We're good.
We'll have to separate you two.
I second that Sherry's motion.
Are you sure? You get one last chance. Come on, Commissioner Kelly. Okay. Mr. Scott?
If we could just take each of those separately, election of the chair and election of the vice chair.
All right. So first in front of us, we have a nomination by Commissioner Caliendo, seconded by Commissioner Scarborough. To...
Backwards. Backwards.
I'm sorry.
She made a motion. I'd second.
Seconded by Commissioner Caliendo to nominate Commissioner Burke to chair. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Congratulations, Madam Chairman.
Sherry, then you need to make the next motion.
My next motion would be to...
One more time. Come on, Kelly. Come on.
Motion to appoint Commissioner Kern as vice chair.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Scarborough, seconded by Commissioner Caliendo. All in favor?
Aye.
I don't get a vote, so, okay, 5-0. Thank you very much. That's very kind of you guys.
Thank you. Thank you.
I agree, we should pass things along. Ms. Wendy, anything else?
So our organizational meeting, in your backup material, we have kind of what we have as our attendance that goes on, and, you know, over the last year, we've had quite a few changes. We've had our director retire. We have a new director on board. We've had other staff retire and relocate, so we have been going through a lot of new changes with the zoning division. We've also, will be working on in this upcoming year, some additional changes through statute, as well as some amendments that are coming down and direction from the board as we process applications in our ag reserve. So we are very, very busy, and we're also looking to hire many staff in our, we're about a 25 to 30% deficiency in staff right now. So as the applications continue to move forward, we're very appreciative of our hard-working staff who stay late and try to present all of these applications before you. So I do know that we, I don't think we've had any changes to our sunshine rules and regulations, but if there's any questions, our county attorney is always available if there's any question, but do you have any ethics or sunshine updates for us? No updates?
I think everybody on the board is pretty familiar with the rules, and I'm open for questions whenever you have them, obviously. I know sometimes there are last-minute questions before the meeting, but as always, we would always prefer, if you can, to come to us as early as you think you may have a conflict with any questions.
Scott, would you like to introduce our newest member?
Yes, I would, actually. This is Darren Lizer, and he joined us a few months ago. He'll be focused mainly on planning, but as you have seen, planning and zoning, there's a lot of overlap, and so you may see him at some of these meetings. I may be at some of the planning meetings, and we're really excited to have him here. Darren's coming from the South Water, South Florida Water Management District as an attorney, and he comes to us with a little, you know, some background in local government, so he's already hit the ground running, and we're happy to have him.
Welcome, sir. Glad to have you a part of the team.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Any further?
Nothing else, unless the commissioners have any direction or questions or comments for us. We'd be more than happy to answer anything.
Lisa, I don't like the new numbering system. But I completely understand it after it was explained to me, so just...
So now that we're bringing up the packet, how each commissioner is leaving, I see the blue binder. There was a lot of discussion last, the time just blends together, but I think it was last fall, some of the commissioners brought up at the Board of County Commissioners, they weren't fans of legal paper. And the planning division where I'm from doesn't use legal paper. We do letter paper. So we, we're not clear if the board is moving to letter from legal. However, one of the options that we're discussing for our Board of County Commissioners staff reports is doing the letter paper with the fold-out of the 11 by 17, which I think you already believe in your packet, or does just the chair, you know, the 11 by 17 plan. We've also had discussions on providing links within the reports to the plans, because I don't know about you, but I have a really hard time, whether it's 11 by 17 or eight-and-a-half by, what, eight-and-a-half by 14, 11 by 14? I have a really hard time seeing the plans. So we don't, I don't think that our packet is easy to click and then pop in a site plan. I think it's a little bit blurry. So if you have any feedback on that, let me know. Also, if you enjoy having the three, those binders in that mechanism, let us know, or if you'd like us to give you all one of these binders to keep at home and then do three-hole punch anything, let us know.
No, thank you.
No, you prefer the...
Good try.
This is good.
You prefer the flip?
Yeah, but I'd like an orange folder, please. I'm only kidding.
Lisa, is there an option? I know you talked about the 11 by 17 and perhaps the actual, just the eight-and-a-half by 11. Is there a plotter option? You know, the large plotter printers where we can just put it on one single sheet? Is that possible? And then have that displayed behind each of us so we could just turn it back around and refer to it? No, I'm kidding. Never mind.
I was going, he was drinking when it got here this morning.
Would it be helpful to have links within the reports so you can zoom in better in the plans, or no? I mean, are you okay with the legal size plans or working with the attachments of the 11 by 17?
It would be easier if we could see them on the screen during the presentations. That's, to me, that's a problem that...
Yes.
Yeah.
We can't, you know, I don't know what this is in front of us.
This does nothing.
A Walkman.
And in front of us does nothing.
This is 1996.
You're not able to, I remember the first time I was here, I thought, oh, this is great. I can enlarge it. There's a Zoom, and there isn't. This is just, I never have it on.
Yeah, if we can make them bigger or some...
I have to agree with Sherry.
You know what we can do? In addition to the PowerPoint presentation, we can have all of the PDFs of the site plan or the DWG probably open, if we want to talk about the site plan, to have the staff switch off the PowerPoint, go onto the, either the PDF or the DWG, and blow it up. Would that be helpful?
That would be, that would be helpful, because I mean, I'm trying to look at it in here, and...
So difficult.
It's hard.
Yeah. In our packages, I mean, if there was a way to use 11 by 17 for the plans only, that would be nice.
Okay, but you do prefer the legal size and those blue binders with the top?
I don't have an opinion legally or otherwise. Is it a possibility, and I don't know, maybe it's legally that we don't do this, I'm not sure, general location, can we get the actual physical address? I mean, I like to do a lot of the site visits and, you know, research and everything beforehand, and sometimes it's difficult to know the exact location when you get a general .7 this or that.
I think we can add that to the first page of the reports where we have, we have that first page that has the PCN and...
If an address has been assigned.
That could be phenomenal.
I was trying to go to a restaurant that we had out here. I can't remember. Some lady had, and...
Yeah, you're talking about the country, and it's south on Military. Just go south on Military. It's on the left. You can't miss it.
I couldn't find, I know I couldn't find. I drove out there to see what the connection was like, where they wanted to build building. There's no address. I couldn't find a place.
That's a great little restaurant. You should go out there for breakfast.
Your treat. Can I borrow your car?
Sure, come on, let's go.
Okay, I'll go.
Can't talk about work, though.
Anything that's free. Yeah, yeah. Well, we'll invite him along so he can... Nope.
There you go.
And I will expand about the page numbering. So what's happening these days is the Board of Accounting, for the Board of County Commissioners meeting, we are getting additional items coming from other departments. If you're following, like, last month or last week, there was four or five additional items at the Board of County Commissioners. Those items are coming in independently, and it's become practically impossible to be able to print and then substitute in those additional Board of County Commissioners items with having a sequential numbering sequence. So that's how that fell out.[1697.23]